Call meeting in order, all please rise. I ask you to join me in a moment of reflection on the business at the Forests this evening. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, select role.
Alderman Basso.
Here.
Alderman Violet.
Here.
Alderman Clifford.
Here.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman Kromarski.
Here electronically.
Okay, Alderman McGovern.
Here.
Alderman McGrogan. Alderman Lewandowski.
Here.
Mayor, City Clerk, City Treasurer, Attorney General. All right, tonight we've got a couple of special presentations. First, the Palos Lions Club, I understand, is here, and Herb Schuman.
Thank you. Thank you Mayor Straz, city council members. I'm Herb Schuman, I'm president of the Palos Lions Club. I want to thank the residents of Palos Heights for the great support this year at our, once again, our Christmas tree lot. We had our biggest sales year ever. What we do with the money from the Christmas tree, the profits, we give it all back into the community as best as we possibly can. We certainly, our highest priorities have always been for a vision and hearing impaired, but we do what we can to find organizations that support our troops and also first responders. We give money to the center and to the crisis center and so forth. But one area we like to do every year is we give a check to each of the police departments on behalf of the Special Olympics, and that's what we want to do tonight, is make that presentation for $500 to City Palos Heights for the Illinois Special Olympics Cop on Top program. Jeff Clifford is a Lions member in good standing, I don't know if you want to be part of this. I have a real check. Hope so.
Does it bounce?
That could touch out.
Shrink it down.
And last shot, no bleeding, please. That's great. Thank you. I have here's the real check. There you go. You're very welcome. Thank you very much.
Mayor, just, and just real quick, this is our 70th anniversary year, and on October 16th, we're going to have our 70th anniversary party, and it's going to be a tribute to first responders in the Palos Lions area. So, we'll tell you more about that later on, but it's going to be a Palos Country Club as you suggested. All right, great.
Thank you very much.
Great, thanks Herb, appreciate it. And next, we have a special presentation, actually swearing in of Alderman Key, who was not available at our last meeting, where the balance of Alderman were sworn in.
Make sure you swear him in.
Yeah. Some people.
Why not?
I, Jeffrey Key.
I, Jeffrey Key.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
As Ward One Alderman.
As Ward One Alderman.
In the city of Palos Heights.
In the city of Palos Heights.
In the county of Cook.
In the county of Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of this office.
Of this office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, under consent calendar, we've got the three items, the approval of minutes of a city council meeting of May 7th, 2019, the approval of the minutes from the committee of the whole meeting on May 8th, 2019, the approval of payroll and voucher list for the period ending May 17th, 2019, and approval to approve of special events application by Meyer Realty for a free shred event to be held on June 22nd, 2019.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Clifford, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski. Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, under, no bills, okay. Under my report, first, I'd like to remind everyone that Monday is Memorial Day, and here at City Hall at 11 o'clock, we will have our annual Memorial Day program. Weather permitting, it'll be outside in front of City Hall at the memorial. If not, they'll have to have it inside here, but hopefully, weather holds off, it's frained every day since then, but we'll hopefully get it in on a dry day. And secondly, as you may, many of you noticed, Alderman Kromarski is here on speakerphone, she is convalescing from a recent heart incident that happened, she actually right after our last city council meeting, as I was sitting in my office, people told me that Alderman Kromarski had collapsed and had a heart incident, and based on the swift action of Sergeant Jeff Crowley and Officer Mike Mathis, who happened to both be here, actually Jeff's here now and Mike is working the camera in the control room, offered CPR to Alderman Kromarski and was able to resuscitate her, so without your guys' training and swift action, it could have been a whole different situation. So I want to thank you, on behalf of the city, for your response to tragedy that happened, and I'm sure Alderman Kromarski shares our feelings for you and both of you, Jeff and Mike both, were able to go into duty and bring her back, so thank you very much, guys. All right, looking for a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the, for the Oaklawn Regional Water Service for Water Transmission Main Project. This was the subject of our special committee of the whole we had on the 8th, so with that, I'll look for a motion to approve it. Move by Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Key, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Good luck, we'll work hand in hand the next couple years.
Thank you Mayor and Board, and particularly, thank you Donna for meeting with Oaklawn at the committee early on, and I wish you a speedy recovery. Just wanted to report to you an update that our member communities met this morning in Orland Park, that would be Mokena, New Lennox, Orland Park, Oak Forest, Palos Park, Palos Hills, and also representative from Country Club Hills and Chicago Ridge in Oaklawn. And they voted to move forward and recommend to our village board next Tuesday, the contract that will involve work in Palos Heights for the next two years. I'm pleased to report that the lowest bidder is Reliable Equipment Inc. of Chicago. They are the bidder that we've been very pleased with that's been working in Oaklawn. Their bid was $56,471,000, slightly more than we would have liked, but a reflection on the economy in the Illinois area, particularly the tunneling work. $17 million is the amount of the $56 million that will be devoted to tunneling, and we think we have a very fine contractor that's doing that work, but there's a lot of construction out there, and that's even before the capital bill that's being considered by the governor and our general assembly. So, we appreciate moving this project forward, we look forward to working with you, and I did share with the board how respectful you were in all our meetings, and that we pledge to work closely with you on any problems that may arise during construction. We've already heard some concerns about the actual positioning of a comment power line. That has already been brought to our attention by your fine public works and administration, and we'll be working on that one to make sure that's proper.
And one thing we do ask that you communicate with our residents as things go on, so they know what's going on, you know, in their neighborhood, so.
We look forward to working with you, thank you very much.
Very good, all right, thanks Mayor.
Good luck.
Okay, next is something that's going on for a while here, looking for a motion to approve an agreement to purchase a property at 13040 Cypress Lane, part of the Cypress Lane Drainage Project. The actual price will be determined by the two appraisals that'll be done on the project itself, so need a motion for that.
I make that motion.
Moved by Alderman, bang. Basso, second by Alderman Clifford, discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, one quick question on us, on the appraisals, that's the appraisal, the MWRD is funding us buying the property basically at 100%.
Right.
It's based on the two appraisal, MWRD's contract with the city, it requires two appraisals, and then it's kind of a combination of, if they don't match, then it's, they kind of averages them out.
Okay. But that determines the price, the overall price. Okay, very good. All right, City Clerk?
No report.
City Treasurer?
Thank you Mayor. This is the treasurer's report for the period ending April 30th, 2019. The general fund began the month with beginning cash balance of $4,558,583. Revenues of $818,479.36. Expenses totaling $825,096.29. Other source use, $161.55. Giving an ending cash balance in the general fund of $4,438,534. Total of all funds began the month with $17,421,937.94. Revenues of $1,418,226.22. Expenses totaling $1,694,243.92. Other source use, $335,437.14. Giving an ending cash balance in all funds of $16,810,483.10. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
entertain a motion to approve his treasurer's report?
Second.
Moved by Alderman Clifford, second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Violet, discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. City Attorney?
No report.
All right, communications, anyone have? Citizens wishing to address the council? All right, stand your reports, Alderman McGrogan's not here for finance, is there anything anybody have?
Nothing.
All right, public safety, Alderman McGovern?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the only thing I have this evening is adding, adding to what you were saying, I'd personally like to thank Sergeant Crowley, I'd like to thank Mike Mathis, okay, I'd like to thank Dan Nissavich, Brent Lewandowski, and I'd like to thank from the Palos Fire Department Protection District, I'd like to thank Captain Matt Gartrusia, Al Dagius, Dave Schwinn, Brian Mueller, Brandon Masana, and Elliot Bucka. And from the Palos Fire Protection District, I would like to thank firefighter Aaron Hammack, Eric Quann, Steve Hanley, and Joseph Behren, who along with Lieutenant Thomas O'Connor. Those were the responders that turned around and assisted both Alderman Kromarski and her husband, where both of them ended up having to spend at least one night in the hospital over there. And I'd like, as a retired police officer myself, I really want to turn around and say, what a wonderful job of coordination between Sergeant Crowley, Mike Mathis, and the Palos Heights firefighters that took over when they turned, after they had brought back Alderman Kromarski. They, Sergeant Crowley and Officer Mathis did a beautiful job up until, and maintained everything perfectly, and the coordination between them and the firefighters that turned around and took over for them was just an outstanding textbook display of coordination between all these public officials. As far as Dan and Brent, they turned around and saw that Alderman Kromarski's husband was going, looked like he was going into shock, they turned around and worked with him, contacted the paramedics from our first ambulance crew, and then contacted for a second ambulance to turn around and come in and take over. They took over for Dan and Brent, and everything up till today has worked out perfect, and from the bottom of my heart, I really want to say thank you fellows. You showed me something. I've been, I've been associated with law enforcement for over 60 years, and you showed me something like that night. Thank you very much.
I think one word to bring it up is professionalism, and above and everybody's case and.
Above and beyond that Mayor, I will say that, no. Individual professionalism, coordination, all of the above put together, you'll never, I've never seen it, I've seen incidents like this before, many, many times, and, but I've never seen it so well organized by people that had no combined training together, when you really think about it, so, and that's all I really have to say.
Thank you sir. Alderman Basso, can you still ground some property?
Yes Mayor, I have no report this evening.
Right, planning and zoning, Alderman Clifford?
Thank you Mr. Mason, Mr. Mr. Tongue tied.
Easy for you to say.
Motion to adopt an ordinance approving the proposed Allwood subdivision for the reconfiguration of two parcels located at 8136 Misty Meadow Drive.
Moved by Alderman Clifford, second by Alderman Key, discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Next, a motion to adopt an ordinance approving a seven-foot side yard setback to allow for the construction of an oversized ETAT garage, 900 square feet, at 12554 South 76th Avenue.
Moved by Alderman Clifford, second by Alderman Key, discussion?
This was downsized from 1,200 to 9.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski.
Aye.
Alderman Kromarski on number 12.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Motion carries.
That's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Alderman Key, recreation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve a change order with Country Landscape and Supply for pool deck drainage in the amount of $15,703.50.
Moved by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Violet, discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Then I'd like to make a motion to approve engineer payment estimate to Country Landscape for the Pool Deck Concrete Replacement Project in the amount of $40,703.50.
Moved by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Violet, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Then I'd like to make a motion to approve replacement of the tennis court lighting at Community Park by March One Electrical Design in the amount of $11,528.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Clifford, roll call.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Then I'd like to make a motion to approve the base, Palos baseball organization's request for extended use of lighting on Pony Field and North Field on June 8th and 21st of 2019 until 11 o'clock PM, and the possible rain dates of June 26th and 28th of 2019 until 11 o'clock PM.
Moved by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Violet, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries.
And finally, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Ozland Open Space Line Acquisition and Development Grant Agreement with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources for the Palmer Park redevelopment project.
Moved by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Violet, discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Roads to construction, Alderman Kromarski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
I would like to thank you for allowing me to participate in this meeting electronically, and I have comments for the first responders also, it saved my life, but I will reserve those comments until I can see them face to face. I would say that is my report.
Nice to have you with us, thank you very much. License permits and franchise, Alderman Lewandowski, first time here, huh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for that warm introduction. While I do not have a report, I do have a point of clarification as to what constitutes a quorum in these committees. So these are committees of four, so what is a quorum?
Chairman and one other.
Two.
Two, so two constitutes a quorum as long as one's the chairman. Okay, that's all I have, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If the chairman is not there, I believe it's three. It's all three of the others, correct?
Okay, because I was looking in the rules and I didn't find anything about, you know, the number that constitutes a quorum, and I know it's the majority, but if it's chairman and one, that's fine. Thank you.
Very good. Water and sewer, Alderman Violet?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve a proposal from Christopher Burke Engineering to perform a water rate study at a cost of $13,400.
Moved by Alderman Violet, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Basso, discussion?
I have comments on that.
Sure.
This topic has come up several times while I've been on the Water Committee, and this recommendation moved out of committee with a 3 to 1 vote. I became aware of what seems to me as a kind of a discrepancy in the billing process. Because of a water billing, I received a resident living in a home in Palos Heights using 4,000 gallons of water, and being required to pay for a minimum of 12,000 gallons. And we all know why we do that, we all know the advantages of doing that, but it seems a little inequitable in our, in our system and our time to be billing in that respect. And this is not, this is not an attempt to override or withdraw from the policy that we're, we're using now, it's just an opportunity, I think, to see if there are other options available to us in our billing where we can keep the status quo, yet spread the cost a little more equitably across the board. Thank you.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
No.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
No.
Alderman Kromarski.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Present.
Alderman McGovern.
No.
Motion's not agreed to.
Okay, all right. Anything else?
That's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, business, economic, development, Alderman Key?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'd like to just tell the residents of our city that there's a couple of different ways that the city advertises some special events in town, like you were mentioning one earlier in your report, and we're on all the different social media platforms, so whether you're interested in something that's coming out of City Hall, or Lake Catherine, the library, the city, the rec department, they're all on Facebook and Twitter and things like that. And we also have an email blast that goes out on a regular basis, so if something's happening around town, even at the college and stuff, we send an email blast out, and if you're interested in getting on that email blast, you can sign up on our website. And so, you know, you go to the website, I think you go under our community, and then there's a place to sign up for notifications, and you would also get stuff from the police department as well. So, and if you have any trouble doing that, just call City Hall and we'll, we'll get you on there. We'd like to see as a, the economic development, because occasionally, we have things that relate to the businesses, and we'd like to get the word out on those when they have a special event. And then I'd like to remind people that the farmer's market is up and at it again, so every Wednesday in the municipal parking lot from 7 o'clock to 1 o'clock. It is slightly expanded this year, there's seven more vendors, and so come out on tomorrow morning and enjoy that. And then, lastly, I'd like to say a big thank you to the volunteers that came out on this past Saturday morning to plant all the planters that go around town. That's through the beautification committee, but there's a number of volunteers, and one of the things that is really pleasing is one of the local Girl Scout troops come out with a handful of young ladies, and to see them, they're so enthusiastic, a lot of smiles in putting those plants out, and, and it's a work of a few that everyone's going to enjoy, so just, big thank you to them, and that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, under ad hoc cable, just have a report here, that the, for the year 2018, Channel 4 had originated and produced 200 shows in the studio that focused on government transparency, awareness programs that provide information on Palos Health Medical Programs, the Cancer Society Programs, Medicare Enrollment Guidance, insurance information, and outreach programs in local regions including Lake Catherine, Parks and Recreation, and library programs. In addition, information is provided on the city's economic development process and promotion of retail stores. Channel 4 team consists of part-time staff and volunteers that work over 1,000 hours to produce these shows on a 24/7 broadcast every day of the year. Channel 4 has also been instrumental in consulting and assisting all of the towns in the southwest region as far as starting up cable access stations or an expansion of the program they may actually have. Every year, many municipalities continue touring Channel 4 studios, and they are such beautiful studios, to view the technology and operational operations for guidance and assistings in implementing their own programming instances at their locations. And on March 21st, 2019, the Palos Heights Public Library presented to Channel 4 the George W. Palmer Distinguished Service Award for recognition of research and production in the story of the Palace of City Heights movie. Recipients was John, was Ron Jankowski and Carl German, each also received their own award for the work that they have done for Channel 4 over the years. And copies of this video are actually available at the public library. It's a super video if you haven't seen it, tells the story from Palos Heights from its beginning to where we are now over the last probably 75 years, it actually starts before we wore a city, so it's a fantastic video, so if you're looking for a copy of it, check with the library. That's all I have under cable, old business, anyone have? Citizens wishing to ask any questions regarding the business this evening? Any new business?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to reiterate what Alderman McGovern said about our first responders, police and fire, and how important they are, and how sometimes, how they're not appreciated, criticized for one thing or another, but when it comes down to it, they're there, they're there for you, and they're there for a reason. And the reason it sort of touches home a little bit, my son-in-law's brother is a Chicago fireman, was just recently caught in a fire and burned and hospitalized at the University of Chicago, he got out today, and he's a first responder, so I know what these guys do and what they put on the line, life and body, and for that, I praise you and I thank you for all you did, especially for Alderman Kromarski, and I think that stands for each and every one of us in the city council and for all the residents of Palos Heights. For with that, accept my gratefulness and my indebtedness to you, your chief, and everyone else as well. Thank you very much.
Amen.
Mr. Mayor, I have some new business as well.
Sure.
It's been my first meeting in all, I have some new business. First, I'd like to express what a great honor it is to serve on the city council and serve the good people of Palos Heights. I've been met with a warm reception from my fellow aldermen and alderwomen and mayor,
and what they put on the line, life and body, and for that, I praise you and I thank you